Thanks for making
Well, we ready to go then? Ready to roll?
Yeah, go for it.
Do we have everybody here?
We, well, that's what roll call is for.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Councilman, okay, cool.
Hey, August, one thing, you're gonna give some instruction on how we're gonna conduct the meeting, how you're gonna, how the mayor will call on people once we get started, right?
Yes, since, yeah, we didn't have everyone here early, as I'd hoped, so we'll do it all now.
My fault, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right then, I call this meeting of the Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, April 28th, and it is 7:03 PM. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mijewski.
Present.
Councilman Parada.
Present.
Councilwoman Karpinski.
Present.
Councilman Choudhury.
Present.
Councilman Omar Sumi.
Present.
Councilman El Samiri.
President.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
That is a virtual call, Madam Mayor.
All right then, all rise, I guess, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep.
I'm gonna move this camera so it's not an embarrassing view here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So that is an example of why it's hard to all talk at once in a virtual meeting. So, I am going to ask, I have the ability to mute you all, and I have the speakers muted on my end. I would ask that, folks, you mute yourselves for now, and just know when you're gonna talk to unmute yourselves. I don't really wanna be muting the council members if I don't have to, because we want you to be able to have the discussion you'd normally have in a normal meeting. Mayor Mijewski, you should probably stay unmuted at all times, along with Kathy, and we will do our best to recognize folks when it is appropriate.
All right, then, I, do we have any community announcements?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
I had a request from Judge Crott to mention that their amnesty program has been extended until June 1st, and also that their court staff is at City Hall working, and to call if they need help to make any payments.
Okay, and I'll also mention that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Are there any other community announcements? Then, we'll move to proclamations, recognitions, and presentations.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
I'm assuming this was probably already done for a letter of condolence for Isaac Robinson and for Darla Swent?
Yes, they're both in the works, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
But thank you for mentioning that, Councilwoman.
Yeah, just
All here for the first time since that news broke, and
Yeah. Definitely two people that really fought for our community, so they will be sorely missed.
Yes, thank you.
Any other proclamations, presentations, or recognitions? Then, we don't have Sue Feinberg here yet, so we will move on to the census presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No presentation, again, it's just a reminder how important the census is, and how the census will help everyone in our community and throughout the state of Michigan. Everyone's invited to respond, and people should have received a paper copy. Ninety-five percent of households should have gotten some kind of notice in the mail, but if you didn't, you can go to the city of Hamtramck website, hamtramck.us, fill out your census form, there's a place to click, and it takes about five minutes to do. Everyone should be counted, and especially during this COVID-19 crisis that we're in, the less door-to-door that we have to do, and the more people that submit their documents online, this would be good for the census. We are below the state average right now, less than 50%, but I'd like to see that number grow up 10% in the next week, so we can announce that, Madam Mayor, at your 8:30 call one morning.
Okay, then, if there are no other proclamations, recognitions, or presentations, are there any changes to the agenda? Not hearing any, we'll move to public input, and Augie, this is, this is your, your, your thing to manage.
Figure out, right. Bill is here, but I don't know, you don't see him anymore, I'm not sure if he wants to speak or not. Bill, did you want three minutes?
Is my mic on? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't need three minutes, I just wanna say hi to everybody, and glad to see you're all alive, and looking forward to getting together again. I have some concerns, but nothing immediate. Thank you for asking. Do I have three minutes, though, eh? Okay, cool.
Before and after.
See you, Mr. Bill.
Hey, can I drink while I'm watching the meeting?
Sure can.
Okay.
Can I drink while I'm talking in the meeting?
All right, thank you, continue on.
Thank you for joining, Mr. Bill.
My ass. Okay. Okay, is there anyone else in the community, some other people here? I don't see anyone going live that wants to talk. Okay.
All right.
We'll move on, we have another one.
Probably as, as, you know, we get more used to this, we'll probably have more public comment in meetings.
Madam Mayor, could they use the chat function to let August know if they would wanna speak? Maybe that's something we need to announce.
Bill wants to say something. The chat function is disabled as part of the governor's order to disallow people from chatting in here, which is kinda silly, but it's one of the things they had us do in the, in the set, at the setup.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a hand icon on the bottom of the participant list where you click it and you raise your hand.
Raise your hand, yep.
Thank you.
We hope to use in the future, we just gotta get people used to it. Yep, there it is, perfect.
Very great, thanks. Then, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and items on the consent agenda are approved in a single motion without discussion, and they are the approval of the minutes from the March 3 regular city council meeting, the approval of the minutes from the March 23 special city council meeting, the approval of the invoice register for the date ending April 28, and the approval of the pre-approved expenditures for the date ending April 28.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, that, are there any opposed? All right, then, the consent agenda is adopted. And we'll move to new business, then. The first item of new business is a resolution approving support for an on-premise tasting room permit for the proposed development of Florian East Hamtramck LLC at 9350 Joseph Campo.
I'll offer.
I'll support.
Discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have on the agenda today an item to consider approval of Florian East. I can't see, August, whether Alex Isiri, our Community Economic Development DDA manager, is on this.
He is here, and he was here, where did he just go?
There he is.
There he is, there's Alex.
Alex, are you able to speak to it, or would you like to? Fantastic.
I can speak to it, but we also have Milo and Will here, who can speak in much greater detail.
Yep, if you can give a quick overview, Alex, talking about it, and then if the council members have any questions, they can direct them to the owners.
Certainly, and so, what they are hoping to do is apply for a license through Lara, but in order to be considered for that license, they need a recommendation from the municipalities government, so, from the city council. And so, basically, it's a very straightforward resolution saying that they are recommending this business be considered for a license.
And one other thing that we need to mention is this isn't approved use in the DDA district, in our central business district, so it isn't so much that you're approving what they're going to do, even though you are, but this is an approved use, there is not a place for council to say this is not something that we approve. So with that, Madam Mayor, if any council members have questions, this would be the time.
Can you, we know what kinds of business, can you please describe what types of business they try to do?
Right.
Milo, are you gonna speak to that?
Yeah, sure, I'm happy to do that. I guess, to start out, happy Ramadan. Good to be here, I've met a lot of people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Met a lot of people that are, that are on here, and it's a couple new faces as well, so that's great. So, I'm here with Will, and actually, also, one of our other investors, or maybe two of our other investors, Christopher.
Oh, then I'll let them in, I see them sitting there, I'll, I'll let their faces show here.
Mm-hmm. And, basically, we're, we're a group of, at this point, five of us, who are all based in the local area, Will and myself live in Hamtramck, and Will is currently the head brewer at Eastern Market Brewing Company. I'm personally an attorney, real estate attorney is sort of my day job. And, at this point, as you know, we are applying for a taproom license and a brewer's license, which would be essentially a part of a brewery, where we would, you know, essentially be a community institution. Our plan at this point is to operate that out of 90 through 50 Joseph Campo, which we purchased.
Okay. What types of business here?
Yep, like I said, it would be a community brewery. We would also have event space that was available for artists, you know, performers as well. Will can probably add on to that, if you'd like.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. I'm Will, some of you are familiar faces, some of you, it's good to meet you virtually. Like Milo said, I've been head brewer at Eastern Market Brewing Company downtown for the past two years. I really am passionate about trying to bring a local community center, as well as like a beer institution, to our city. Looking to set down deeper roots here than I already have, been here since 2014, and I hopefully look forward to doing that, and getting to know you guys better as well.
Okay, that is any?
I
Go ahead, Councilman.
Councilman Hassan, go ahead, and then Councilman Choudhury.
Thank you. Anything, any liquor related gonna be sold at the institution, or anything, any other things?
Yeah.
Besides beer?
Yeah, no, I don't believe there would be a plan to sell anything besides beer at the institution. I mean, I can also tell you, sort of, if you've had a chance to read our write-up, which I think Alex made sure was distributed to folks for this meeting, but I'm happy to circulate again. Really, the goal of this is to be a community-focused space, with a focus on actually low alcohol beers. So, that is, you know, the goal is not to have a house of debauchery, the goal is to have something that the community can be proud of, and can utilize.
Okay.
Councilman Choudhury?
All right, thank you, Milo and Will, for elaborating everything. I still don't understand, and not cleared, as to what kind of benefit would our community receive from this? You know, what is the goal, or is this a business-type entity you're establishing in the city of Hamtramck?
Yeah, so it would be a business, we would definitely contribute to the tax base, that's one thing. We would also hire employees, and I think Will and myself are both really dedicated to making sure that it would be folks that live in the community, if at all possible, but certainly from the surrounding area. We both are Hamtramck residents, I've been here three years, Will has been here, I guess, five or six years. We plan to restore a building that's been vacant, and I know tax delinquent for many, many years, at this point. So, overall, we really think that this is a benefit for the community, we would also have this space available for folks that wanted to utilize it, whether that's a nonprofit, or other local institutions that like to use the space for event space as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Omar Sumi?
Yes, so Milo, I appreciate the, the early communication, the open flow of communication. I just wanted to read one, one point, right here, in regards to what the business will contribute. It says, "Local art message boards and events will also serve to seamlessly establish Florian East as a centralized brewery-based community," but over, overall, like it's an open taproom. Does that mean if somebody wants to be able to host a local community initiative, or an event, and they wanna talk about something that'll progress the community, or move it forward, they'll be able to keep in touch with, with you, Christopher, or Will, and be able to, you know, utilize that space? Is it gonna be per cost, is it gonna be at a discounted amount, because it's for a community initiative, or is it gonna be pro bono? I just wanted to ask about that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, just to let you know, I guess, initially, I think our plan is to open with only a limited schedule, so I don't think we would have operations every single day out of the taproom, so there would be during which, really, I think, you know, we haven't discussed this in detail, but I think we would certainly offer it at a discounted, if not free, level, particularly for nonprofits and, and, you know, community organizations. If it was a business that wanted to rent it, that would probably be a different story.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Council, just second, Councilman Hassan, let's see if any of the other council people want to say anything first, and then we'll come back to you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
Just like Kathy was explaining in the beginning, that, you know, this is an approved use, so, I mean, this isn't a, this isn't our deciding if this is an allowed business or not. This is us just allowing them to apply for their license through Lara. I don't think we should be, I mean, we shouldn't be deterring any business from opening, especially if they're open, if they're planning to open in a, in a vacant building that's been vacant, that we're not collecting taxes on. I think we need to welcome any business, and I appreciate Milo and Will and Chris reaching out and being here this evening to explain their business model. And, nice to see your faces, and it's nice to see that these are people that live in the community, that are residents here, that wanna have a business here. We need more of that, so I appreciate that, and I wish you guys good luck.
Thank you.
And, anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman?
I should say to Will, Chris, and Milo, thank you guys for submitting very detailed plans that you submitted. I looked through them, and you guys have a really cool plan, it's a really cool idea. Shouldn't really take any of us by surprise, because you laid out exactly what you were trying to do with this building, and we're very clear about it. I'm very excited for this to be a part of the community, and I've got a little bit of experience with what you're trying to do, so if you need any help, you're welcome to reach out to me, and I'm looking forward to seeing you guys open up.
Thanks, Ian.
And, Councilman Hassan, you wanted to, you had another question?
Madam Mayor, concerned, there is the similar types of business, and the whole room, we have, I feel, more than enough, why we are focusing only one types of business, and one types of things, not the other things, could be more other essential things Hamtramck needs? That's why I feel, and also, the permission we are given today, is the, is the permission?
No, it's not.
Is the permission to allow the, allow the, why it came before them? You go Lara, then Gary, then come to the me, that means
Then you, then why don't you buy the building, and you can open up a business?
First of all, there is no other brewery or brew tap in Hamtramck, so this is a, one of a, this is the only brew tap in Hamtramck.
It's very similar, it's very similar.
As the city manager here has mentioned, this is an approved use, and an encouraged use
Yeah.
by our, by our master plan. So, so I'm gonna call the vote. We have a resolution approving support for an on-premise tasting room permit for the proposed development of Florian East Hamtramck LLC at 9350 Joseph Campo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Is that just Councilman Hassan? Motion passes, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, the paperwork is straightforward, I have it on my desk, it's very similar to the lottery paperwork that I've done before, so I'll have this in probably tomorrow morning, and I will CC the two of you, because I have your emails, Milo and Will, tomorrow with a copy of it, so you can see it went in, okay?
Everyone in.
Thanks, everybody. Looking forward to, to seeing this thing come together.
Okay, take care of them.
Likewise, pleasure.
Next item is a resolution authorizing Wayne County Land Bank to quiet title on Hamtramck, on city of Hamtramck parcels.
I'll offer.
Second.
Madam City Manager, if you wanna talk to this?
Yes, I wanna launch this, but then I'm gonna let Alex take it from there, you know, before
Folks, if you want her to go, it's up to you.
What?
She just checked in, Sue.
Okay, soon as we finish this item, we'll let her get warmed up.
Sure.
So, this item, we've been working, inventorying our city-owned properties, we did the target market analysis, and following the, receiving the target market analysis in, last year, we've been working for months trying to put together a development plan, and we are at the point now where we're ready to make sure that the titles to properties that the city owns are clear and developer-ready. I do wanna mention that when I say developer, that could be an individual, that could be a corporation, that could be a group, that could be three friends together. We will have an open meeting inviting developers, and put together an RFP, so that these properties will sell. We're already working on that. But this particular agenda item is to clear title on properties that have a little bit of kinky titles. We acquired these through foreclosure, and they don't always have a clear title, so the quiet title process is necessary. By working with the Wayne County Land Bank on this, we can save a lot of money. If we did this ourselves, through our own legal firm, it would cost us far more, but for $500 each property, we can have them ready to do our first pilot project of inviting developers to utilize these properties. So I'm gonna turn it over to Alex, real quick, just for a couple of other remarks.
Yep, and so, thank you, Madam City Manager, so we brought this list together with help from the Wayne County Land Bank. They gave us a list of initial properties that would be very easy to clear title on, and then what we did from there is Gracie and I looked at where these properties were distributed, and then tried to cluster additional properties around them. And so, hopefully, that will minimize disruption to other parts of the city, and hopefully create some opportunities for potentially larger developments than like a single-family home.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
Kathy, can you speak on when we've done this before, what the success rate was, if, or we haven't ever done this before? I'm, I thought we did something like this a couple years ago, and, so if you could just talk on the success rate of that?
Okay, so this is different than what we've done before. In the time I've been here since 2012, we have not done this. I can just go through a couple of the things we have done, and how this would be different. So we did an overall auction for properties, and that was during the time we were in emergency management, when Judge Keith released properties. You'll remember that we had about 300 properties, and they were held until we settled essentially the Sarah Garrett lawsuit. And so, we sold a bulk of them then, and some were developed, sit idle as a vacant lot next to a property. The next thing that we did as a city council and the administrative team was we did a neighborhood stabilization program, not your typical NSP, but we called it neighborhood stabilization, when auction properties were made available to a, we went out to bid, and, and we selected one vendor who was improving properties that were acquired, or would be, we would exercise our right of first refusal. That was another program. This is different, these are vacant lots that we have owned for a number of years. We mow them, we insure them, we pick up dumping, illegal dumping on them, and these are the properties that we identified when we started the target market analysis as properties that we wanted to take to their best and highest use. So these are totally owned by the city for a number of years, and have not been developed. At one time, many of these were offered at the auction block, but they were rejected. So what we're doing now is grouping together a pilot group of 18, we wanna make them available to developers, and I defined that earlier, and what we'll try to do is attract people who want to do something, which will raise the overall SEV of our community, our tax base, and do some infill housing on vacant lots.
Madam Mayor, just
You wanted to follow up?
Yeah, just, because I know at times, residents are interested in lots that are next to their property. Is there, has there been any interest on any of these lots? I know sometimes they'll reach out to the city, you know, to see if those lots are gonna be available. Have, with any of these that we have listed, has any, any neighbors reached out about purchasing them?
That's a really tough question, because we do get interest in vacant lots all the time. We don't keep a running list of ones that people have called about. But, but what this is aimed to do, that might be different than a vacant lot program, is take that parcel to its best and highest use. At one time, there was a house on that property.
Right. I, I understand that, I just know that sometimes people are looking to, you know, just add to their parcel, you know, so, I just, that was just, I was just curious. I understand what the purpose of this is, though, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any
Madam Mayor? I just have a quick question for Kathy, that, is this available for residents to purchase? Or, I wasn't cleared, you know, can a, may a resident be interested to purchase these lots? Or they'll be allowed?
That, that's the direction we're heading, and so, what we're calling the people who may purchase this is a developer, because what we're looking for is people who are interested in building a house, building a duplex, building a fourplex, and bringing development to the community. So we will do a call for anyone who's interested. It could be an individual who just wants to buy one lot and build a house on it, or if it's, you know, a group of individuals who wanna pool their resources and build a house, or, or some
Or build an apartment or complex, let's say, you know, someone's on my investor wanted to invest in the lot to build an apartment, or apartment complex, or restaurants, then, so they would have an option to do so, right? They would have an opportunity to bid on it.
Correct, and remember that target market analysis, the target market analysis was very clear, that there is a need for multifamily, two-family, and single-family housing in our community, there's a demand. Now, this COVID, you know, I'll be honest with you, COVID could have changed things, but based on what we knew during that target Marcus, we're gonna move forward with 18 properties as a pilot project. And so, we'll be coming back to you as those documents are finalized. But it'll be an open call to anyone who's interested.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or discussion? Then, we have a resolution authorizing Wayne County Land Bank to quiet title on city of Hamtramck parcels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and now I see we have Sue Feinberg here. So, I don't think we need a resolution to go back to our, to amend the agenda or anything, to go back to the
You can recognize whoever you want, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, let's just do it. So, Sue, are you ready to talk to us about MERS?
I am, thank you, sorry that I had to come in a little bit late. Busy night for council meetings, I guess, on Tuesday night. Well, what I was gonna talk about, what I'd like to go over with you, is I believe that you all have the projection study that MERS did for the city. And basically, you know, just to kind of drill it down, what we did was the city has many divisions, and so what we looked at was combining these divisions, because some of the divisions, especially the division didn't have many actives in them, they were triggering some policies that were increasing the cost. And so what we did was we combined them into two of the different divisions, and by doing this, it was able to eliminate having to accelerate the cost in a couple of those divisions, and give you a little bit of relief cost-wise. And we can take a look at that. And we can take a look at that. Okay, Susan, you just had it up here. It's telling me I've got too many things open. So while I pull this up again, as you look at that, you'll see the summary page and you will see that, um.
You should be able to share screen, Sue. You should be able to share that.
Actually, I'm working off my desktop and you're on my iPad.
Okay, then never mind.
Because I don't have a, um, I don't have a speaker for my.
Okay.
Desktop.
I'm just trying to make it easier, that's all. So the folks can follow along on their, on their agendas.
Nope, I appreciate it. Oh, so you don't have a copy of the projection?
August, August, can you share that document that was in Board Docs or is that not possible?
Well, if I start going through my computer, then everyone gets to watch me go through my computer on cable.
So, yeah, no, okay.
But anybody.
You should do that, August.
Pull that up on Board Docs.
Figure it out.
Yeah, everyone should have their Board Docs open.
Yeah, I am.
I was prepared for this. Come on, Susan. I had all this up here, ready. I practically know it by heart. What I can tell you is if you have that open and you're looking at it, what we did was we showed you scenarios and the baseline. So when you're looking at that and you're looking at the baseline page where we're showing you what your baseline cost is based on, um, that would be.
And that's page four, that's page four in the report for everyone that wants to get to that page. And on the top of it, it says Hamtramck City, 8205, all divisions. And that is in Board Docs. Everyone should have their Board Docs open. And for people that are watching, um, it is, um, it is at hamtramck.us. You can open up Board Docs on your screen and follow along with the agenda.
So in that baseline, if you compare that with your annual valuation, it's going to be a little different because what they did do with that, um, projection was use the new assumptions that we're, we're going to be using, which is 7.35 instead of 7.75. But what that does is that tells you if you don't, if you don't combine anything, what your costs are going to be going forward. And then we have scenario one and scenario two. And what the actuaries have done is that is the cost to the city after combining the divisions together and giving some relief. A couple of the divisions had a lot of unfunded liability. So we couldn't, we had to, you know, put them on a little bit of a different amortization schedule. So what that shows you in scenario one and scenario two is it's showing you combining and then it's showing you based on if you amortize that additional, um, liability over a six-year period or if you amortize that over a 10-year period. So you can see that the savings is going to be greater by amortizing that over a 10-year period. And it does offer considerable relief. And it's really just a manner of simply combining divisions. It's a good cleanup.
So everyone, do you remember that we talked about at several meetings that our MERS liability, that we had a, an effect where it was tripled? And instead of having just a small increase, we were facing about a $2 million increase plus. And so, uh, we went to MERS and asked for them to, um, change, uh, our projections by smoothing that over either a six or 10-year period. So that required them to do some fiscal analysis, to look at all of the assumptions, uh, look at our mortality rate, look at all the things that they do in order to decide how much the city, um, has to, um, contribute on an annual basis. So later in this agenda, um, you, you know that we have item D, and I referred to that in the agenda notes for you, um, that we would be voting on choosing a scenario tonight in order to, um, move forward, uh, in our best fiscal way. And that's what, that's one piece of our budget scenario. August, I don't think that's the right page.
Okay, which page?
The page, um, should have at the top, all divisions, projections of employer contributions. Um, it's page four of the second section.
Okay, let's see. This one?
Keep going, keep going. Right there, right there.
Important comment?
That was it.
Important comments of the graph?
No, no, back up to where it has those three, the, the three columns, right? That's the thing right here, right here. Um, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So Sue, can you see that on the screen where the modified baseline, scenario one and scenario two are?
I can, thank you.
Okay, good. So we're looking at, we're looking at recommending tonight, scenario one, which would take our contribution, um, uh, down to 5,100,000, which still is a little higher than what we're currently doing. And we'll talk about that, uh, in our budget discussions going forward. But, um, it is not going to be, um, the high contribution of over $7 million. And so that's smoothing it over a 10-year period. And hopefully, um, over the years, as our financial picture, our revenues increase, we will be able to perhaps, um, put some more money in our MERS on an annual basis than this 5.1 million, 5.4, 5.6. If we add more and allow that money, um, to grow, uh, in, at MERS and pay that off, we'll get a new number every year of what we need to contribute. So we'll attempt over the years to, um, pay more toward that MERS contribution as our finances improve. Um, and hopefully take that 10-year contribution smoothing down to maybe nine years or eight years, um, in order to make our total employer contribution. Susan, Susan Hendricks, uh, may want to contribute as well as Sue Feinberg continue.
But, uh, uh, just first, what is the difference between scenario one and scenario two?
With scenario one.
They both have 10 years.
Nope, scenario one has six years.
It's showing one and year. Yeah, it's showing a comparison, Madam Mayor, but it's smoothing out the liability in a shorter timeframe in scenario two. And in scenario one, it's over the full 10 years.
Okay, thanks.
And keep in mind, that is a 10-year, um, amortization for that piece. It's going to go down one year at a time. So you'll still be working on paying that off. So you'll be paying that additional off in 10 years. A 10-year period.
So the bottom line is, Mayor and Council, that coming up with over a $7 million contribution this year, this next budget year, beginning July 1st, is next to impossible. And so when it triggered that, that multiplier, um, we had to look at different ways to meet our obligation for our pensioners and, and still be able to do the city services that our general fund budget requires us to do. So, um, later in this agenda, if you have any other questions, um, related to the agenda item or, and Madam Mayor, it might be that we'd want to open up that agenda item, um, after Sue answers any questions and just move on it, um, while she's still here with us, um, if that would be okay.
Yeah, it's fine with me. So Sue, sorry we interrupted you, but go ahead.
No, um, I mean, it's, MERS is comfortable with it. I think it's a win-win because it's going to give you some relief. You know, you're still going to be paying down these divisions that have a lot of unfunded liability in them, but it's just going to give you the relief by co-mingling the assets with the other divisions. So, um, we are completely comfortable with it and, um, I'm pleasantly surprised that it's going to give you as much relief as it is.
Um, I'm looking for that resolution just a second because there's, you know, with, with all these screens open. Let me make sure, since I'm, don't have the resolution open, I have the, um, the big document open. Our resolution approving the merge of, of defined benefit divisions, um, are we to choose in that whether it's, whether we're doing scenario one or scenario two? Or are we just?
Yes, we're recommending scenario one.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the scenario number one.
Oh, thanks for pulling up that resolution.
Yeah, it does say scenario one in the resolution specifically.
Thanks. Okay, is there any other discussion or any other questions? Then, um, can, we have a, um, a motion to amend the agenda to, um, discuss or, or to bring up resolution D?
Do C.
I'll make that motion.
Make resolution D, resolution C?
Second.
Okay. Any, anyone disapprove or anyone object? All right, then we'll move right to resolution D, which will become resolution C. And that is a resolution approving the merge of defined benefit divisions in the City of Hamtramck MERS Plan under scenario one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution passes. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
And thanks for helping, um, make this, um, a little more understandable. It's a, it's pretty complicated, so.
Well, you're in good hands, Kathy's got a good grip on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Because we.
And thank you, Susan Hendricks, too, right there. I assume that you had a lot to do with, with helping, uh.
Yeah, and you know what, Mayor? Thank you for saying that. Um, you know, without Susan on some of these financial things, uh, it, you know, it, it would be more difficult. And I will tell you, she has a good grasp on MERS. And, uh, thanks to Sue and Susan, um, I feel like I do as well now. And I will tell you, that was not a strong suit, uh, uh, four years ago, but it is. So thank you so much.
All right. Then we'll move on to the next item, which is now resolu, or, uh, yeah, item D. And that is a resolution approving the award of contract extension to Conica Minolta Business Solutions USA for a color copier fax lease.
Make the order.
A second.
Did you want to talk to that, Kathy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I have some good news. Um, when we went to, uh, publish the meeting on Friday, um, the, uh, resolution resulted in, with the bid that we had resulted in a monthly increase of $195.13. At that time, I had been asking Conica Minolta to review that, uh, because under the guise of what we're looking at during, uh, COVID-19, what we're looking at revenue-wise going forward, I asked them to sharpen their pencil. Now, this bid is a state of Michigan bid. It's done on my deal, my, my deal? Let me, yeah, yeah, state of Michigan bid. So they are the lowest bidder for the state of Michigan. They are currently our vendor and it was competitively bid then. But we now have a price and, and should you approve this resolution, you'd be approving a $1,146.57 payment. So it's lower than we're currently paying today. So I'm pleased to report that they were, they were good about, uh, coming in at a lower price. So, um, my recommendation is very strong now that we should approve this contract.
Good, thanks. Discussion? We have a resolution approving the award of a contract extension to Conica Minolta Business Solutions USA for a color copier fax lease. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Thank you all.
And now we come to the last item, and that is a discussion, um, of our general fund budget revenue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just as a point of note, um, you know that we, um, must by charter pass a balanced budget by the first week of June. And so while we are a little behind on passing that budget, uh, on our budget calendar, on our adopted budget calendar due to the COVID and not having a, a meeting and have the ability to truly examine, um, you know, I will say that, uh, I had a city manager recommended budget for you ready, uh, in February and in early March. It was, you know, we were just, uh, sharpening our pencil a little bit more. But this COVID emergency has changed everything. You know, we've never really had an expenditure problem. You know, when you walk up and down the halls of City Hall, uh, we are at bare bones. You see us doing things in a very frugal way. We're always trying to get the best deal. You know, we're very careful when we bid things out. Uh, we watch our finances, the department heads are to be commended for not ordering things they don't need, not spending, looking hard for, for really, really good, um, opportunities for the city. We don't have an expenditure problem, we have a revenue problem. We have a huge revenue problem. In our, um, August, if you want to put up that, uh, slide that we gave you, um, we have three large revenue decreases that we're facing, um, in this upcoming, um, budget. Can everybody see, uh, the screen that shows the revenue here? And I'm going to point to, um, so what you have here is, I wanted to show you several years, our 1617, our 1819, uh, or 1718 and our 1819. The yellow is our current activity that we're involved in right now. This is the budget year we're in through June 30th. The green is what will be our recommended revenue. And what I want you to see in that last column that has red, red meaning negative, those are the differences between what we have currently for budget revenue and what we anticipate for 2021. So let's just look at the first line for a moment so that you are following in the correct way. We're anticipating a $34,000 loss to our property taxes. So are you following along there? That's the difference between column F and column G, a $34,500 loss in property tax revenue. Those are things that we look at similar to, um, you know, if we know that there's been a tax tribunal change, things like that. But we don't anticipate a huge loss there, but we do anticipate that will go down a little bit. Now, the three things that I want to draw your attention to in that same column are the second item, income tax. We are anticipating almost $500,000 loss in that item. And what we're doing and, and the way that income tax is calculated, that's on a calendar year, January to December. But then that revenue comes in during our fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30. So the people file their income tax the year after they receive that income. So this year, in 2020, we base that revenue number on a three-year average, what we'd had for three other years, minus 25%. And we got the number 25% based on the number of months that we believe COVID is going to impact our residents and businesses' revenue. That number could go up or down, but right now, we're basing it on a 25% decrease of a three-year average. And so that's where we get that $468,585 figure. Is everybody following along okay? I want to make sure that I'm not moving too quickly.
Okay, Kathy.
Okay?
Kathy, Kathy, I do have a, I do have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Choudhury.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so with the property tax and income tax, I mean, are we, those monies will come in, they're just going to be coming in, in the next fiscal year?
So let, let me address that. It's two separate things. Property taxes are also something that. Property taxes are also something that is a, a collection and it comes in, we book that in the year that we receive it. But what that $34,000 decrease is based on is that we know some of our properties had successful tax tribunal. That's a number that we look at all the time, has nothing to do with COVID, the 34,500. The income tax number does have to do with COVID. So when people's income this year is going to be affected by the COVID crisis, business income is going to be affected because we have businesses that are closed and can't operate. Personal income is going to be affected because we have a lot of unemployed people. And one thing is that even those that are receiving unemployment, that is not reported to city income tax. That is reported on federal and Michigan, but not to city. So we're anticipating that about 25% of our average is going to be lowered. Now, what I want to do is, is, I'll say this now and I want you to remember it. We are going to be, what, what we currently do is quarterly, we do budget adjustments. Quarterly, every three months, we bring you something and say, this is more, this is less, or we learned something new. We're going to be watching this on a monthly basis. Well, we'll be watching it on a daily basis, but you'll be hearing about it on a monthly basis whether or not revenues are up or down from our projections. We have to pass a balanced budget. But the fact of the matter is, even the state of Michigan does not yet know what the anticipated revenue is going to look like. If you followed along in the news, you're hearing some doomsday stories about billions of dollars being lost in the state of Michigan. The revenue estimating conference is next month. And so we'll use that information along with other webinars. We've, last week, we were on a phone call with Treasury, a meeting with Treasury where they talked about the revenue that's coming into the state or moreover, the revenue that's not coming into the state. I, I read an article today that no one could believe that six weeks of a crisis would cause this much damage to our economy. But economists know what it's doing, so it's very serious. So what I can hope is that people get back on their feet and their jobs come back, their businesses come back, and that number changes dramatically.
Councilman Choudhary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually had similar questions as Councilwoman Andrea. So she, you already answered that. I just wanted to clarify something. The 2019 income taxes, already we done, you know, that income already passed, but 2019 assessment projections balance the budget for 2020? Or 20?
So let's look, let's look at the yellow columns just for a quick second. That's the year we're in right now, okay? If you look under income tax.
Let's look, let's look at the yellow columns just for a quick second. That's the year we're in right now, okay?
Kind of a delay here.
Let's look, let's look at the yellow columns just for a quick second. We're in right now, okay? Kind of a delay here.
Somebody turn off the Facebook Live.
Live and has the volume up.
Thank you. Okay, so let's talk about that column again. Let's go back there, thank you. Whoever had Facebook on, thank you. All right, so we're going to look at the, at the columns again. Let's look at the yellow. In the second row where it says income tax. You'll, all of you will recall that the governor moved the collection of income tax for this year from the April 30th deadline, which is the typical deadline for our city, to July 30th. So right now, we are delayed. You see that we have collected already $1.8 million of a $2.5 million budget. We just haven't collected it all yet. That money will be due the city by July 30th. When everyone gets back and starts doing their paperwork, that money will come in and we will book it back into last year, as long as it comes in promptly. There's a certain number of time, or a certain length of time that we can book it into the current year. But what we're saying about the next year is that we believe that due to people not working and businesses not functioning, that we only think we're going to bring in a little over $2 million in the next year, which is the green year. That's 468,000 less. And that's based on people not working about a quarter of the year. Now, as time goes on, that number may go up or down. We don't know yet. But we'll watch it very closely. The other item in this column that I want to bring your attention to is our, the next large one, we can skim over licenses and permits. We've lost about a quarter of time for
Revenue.
People bringing in revenue. We're not sure that everybody's going to do the building project that they thought they were going to do. So we dropped that $21,000. And that's, that's based, that's business license building and, and that's a very conservative estimate. But you'll see that's not a huge drop in revenue. The next one that you see, the state share revenue, which is more typically called revenue sharing. You've heard the governor talk about it. You've seen it in the newspaper, you've heard other municipal leaders talk about it. State revenue sharing is projected to go down. Why is that? Because it's based on sales tax and it's, and it's metered out based on how much is collected. So in, let's scoot over to our yellow year. We are at 1.8 million this year, collected. 3.4 million is our amended budget. We should get, our payments are delayed. We get them about three months after on the quarter. So the payment that we're getting now is based on the beginning of the year, which will be our full payment. What we're concerned about is the payment that's reflective of the time we're living in right now. And then we're concerned about next year. So the number that we put there is based on the average again, minus 25%. But we'll revisit that number when we get to the revenue estimating conference and we'll stay very close to our partners at the state of Michigan who work in Treasury. It's somebody we talk to two and three times a week to, if we can get a closer number there. So when I come back with the proposed budget, I really hope that number goes down. And, and the red number, the $910,000 because having just short of a million dollars out of our budget is a huge problem. The next one, state source. Those are some minor things that we do, liquor license, Metro Act, and some other collection from the state. We're only projecting a small decrease in that line item. We're projecting some increases in other revenue. Those are, those are things like payments for services rendered, towing, parking meter dollars, things like that. And so the next two items, we think will go up slightly. The next one I want to bring your attention to is fines and forfeitures. That particular item, excuse me, is our court operations. So the city receives a portion of the revenue collected at the court, 31st District Court. So anticipating a slow start to the 2021 year because right now, our code enforcement officers are not writing many tickets. Our, I won't say none, but not very many. Our police officers are not writing as many tickets. We're not doing traffic stops based on COVID-19 in order to keep our workforce healthy. So those ticket, that revenue that would be collected for a ticket written today or next week or in two weeks, those court dates are pushed out into our new fiscal year. So we're not anticipating having a good first quarter. So what we did is a 25% decrease in that. The last item, interest in rents. That's a, a item, interest in rents is the official name that we have to use by the state of Michigan guidelines. We don't have any rents in there, it's only interest. And for that, we're anticipating a big cut because right now, the interest rate that we're receiving on our investments and our ability to invest has been diminished already. I don't know, you, you'll see in the yellow column that through the, the current day, we've received just a little less than 13,000 of what we anticipated. But we do not anticipate having that power at the financial institutions going forward. So what you see here in front of you, if you look at the bottom of the yellow column that says amended budget, where it says 15,749,000. And then you look at the bottom of the green column, August, I see your pointer there, thank you. You see a difference of 1.6 million dollars already. And we're only talking about the revenue. We haven't even touched on
Other things.
Other, the expenditures. I mentioned early on that we have been bare bones. When you look at our expenditure side, we're not spending like we have all kinds of money, we're very frugal. And let's, can we make an assumption that we didn't go over budget last year? That our expenditures were in line with what you wanted to do as mayor and council? And let's assume that none of our costs went up. And that this revenue, this revenue plus the expenditures not changing at all would result in about a $3.1 million fund balance draw. Because you'll remember last year when we passed the budget, we were drawing from our fund balance in order to have a balanced budget. We knew that our grant line item was not as, as strong in revenues. We knew that we had the reduction in our ability to collect from General Motors based on their operations. And so right now, looking at this revenue, if we did no changes to what our operations are, we'd be looking at 3.1, if everything was status quo. But the other thing is, things aren't status quo. You just heard that our MERS contribution, even with the action you took in this meeting, is going up. It's still going up. It's more than our, what we paid this year. And so that's going up about $498,000. Our healthcare premium rate, we projected would go up about 7%. It went up 7.96. We just got that number two weeks ago. We have step increases in the payroll. So contractual obligations that cause us to have to increase payroll. And that's not to mention just typical increases on things we buy, you know, goods and services. If something goes up a dollar, you know, if the cost of copy paper goes up or supplies or, or any of those kind of things. We aren't the only community suffering. But the problem is, is we already had budgetary concerns. We've been watching it very, very closely. You know, those of you who are newly elected might not have followed it as close, but those of you who have been here a while and have been following it close and making these difficult decisions, you know that we haven't fully recovered. That's evident by our draw from fund balance last year. We haven't resolved everything. You know, we had for many years, grant funding for 14 general fund positions. Those 14 positions are now part of the general fund without grant funding. We did shore up and get our final allotment from the SAFER grant. And we had not budgeted for that because that happens through the audit process. So you'll see in the yellow column under 1920 activity. Take you over there, August. Take your pointer over there. To the $368,000 line item. That was the additional revenue that was received after the audit of the SAFER grant. So that's a plus for this year that we had not counted on. You see nothing in that column to the right. But that $368,000 came in about two weeks ago, very timely. We don't have the GM revenue stream yet, that's off in the future. So in general terms speaking, you know, other cities have a cold. You know, they're, they're worried about what's going on with state revenue sharing. They're concerned about things. But Hamtramck has pneumonia. If there was an easy way to put it, we have pneumonia right now, it's very critical. This will change our budget dramatically, dramatically. Without an increased revenue stream, we'll have to look at cuts to get through this. So I want to mention a few ideas. Whether, you know, before you contribute, any ideas you have about revenue or expenditure, whether you have an idea about revenue increase or whether you have an idea about a decrease in expenditure that you think we don't need any longer. I want to give you a few scenarios to think about and what those cost savings are associated with it. So even though staffing at City Hall right now is at a minimum, we've looked at some changes for staffing to say, what would it look like if we did this? Or what would it look like if we did that? So, you know, we've talked about at different times, closing City Hall a day a week and reducing office staffing to a 32 hours. So if we closed one day a week and reduced our office staff, not our department heads, because they would still work on that off day, but our office staffing, we would save about $57,500 annually. If every department head took a 5% pay cut, every department head, and they'd still work 40 hours, but they take a 5% cut, that would result in about $42,000 savings. We have non-union department staff that are exempt. If they were cut 5%, that would result in about $6,800, $6,800 in savings. If we took all of our part-time employees down to 20 hours a week, they're working, some of them are working 29 right now. But if we took them all down to 20, that would save $36,000 a year. To lay off one employee, that's a office staffer in City Hall, we would have a savings net of about $37,300. And that would be for our lowest paid person if we did a complete layoff of a position. So doing all of that, oh, just a minute. If we asked contractors to take a 5% cut in what they were doing, eliminate some conferences and workshops. We did not add in the alley repair at this time to the budget, that was something you added. Cut supplies. You know, eliminate some of the things that we could likely do without. The total of that would be $285,000. And that does include the alley repair that we did. That was a $200,000 item. So we came up with about 85,000 of other cuts. If we adopted all those changes that I just mentioned, all of that, and pulled that sacrifice from an already gutted City Hall staff, we barely saved $460,000. Now, remember, we were already talking about, about a $3 million deficit at this point. So we don't have a natural path to increased revenue other than small grants that we could apply for that really wouldn't affect general fund budgets. You know, we get the tree grant and we got the grant for recycling, things like that. So there are things that pay for general fund jobs or a general fund expense, like our electric bill or our gas bill. The cuts we mentioned here were AFSMI layoffs or reduced hours in part-time positions. We didn't address the, any change to the fire department or any change to the police department in what I just spoke to you about. So those are some of the things that we put a dollar figure on. I want to give you a few other thoughts to think about. And then open it up for discussion. You have already authorized changes to the way our parking system works. But we limited that to Joseph Campo, parking lots along Joseph Campo and our big parking lots and the McDougal lot, essentially, but we could increase that footprint to a larger part of the city. And when that's installed, have more revenue coming from that, that's a possibility. That's a possible revenue enhancement. We're currently working toward those eighteen lots in a pilot project. We could go a little farther with that, and I could ramp that up very quickly. And move forward on more economic development in that area. So we have more lots to sell and we could broaden our scope and perhaps engage more developers. We could do permanent reductions in staffing, not a furlough, do a true layoff. Whether that would be, you know, department heads, City Hall employees, or our public safety, police and fire personnel, that's a possibility. Remember that we have contracts that we have to follow. And in the way we do things and then the services that we render. So if someone had a thought about any of those, I would address what those contractual obligations we have are. We could combine departments, break down walls between personnel. And so all personnel are cross-trained for various work functions. So instead of having a subject matter expert working only in one department, they would learn multiple tasks and be able to serve the public out of one window. The layout of City Hall is a little difficult for that. But we could, we could work toward that, if that was something the council wanted to do. We currently have a millage on our tax bill for Public Act three forty-five, which is police and fire retiree. It's a half a mil. And we collect that annually. If the council and mayor wanted to, we could prepare for a referendum to put on the ballot in November, asking for an increase to that to cover what our actual costs are for that item. Right now, it does not fund the full cost of that. But what we could do is ask the voters to increase that so it would cover our actual costs. And the way that would work is by simple majority vote of mayor and council. That deadline to do that would be July twenty-eighth. We'd have to have the language, the vote completed, and have that submitted to the county for a November third general election. And that the last resort, I think, would be an emergency loan. And we would prepare for that and not do that unless mayor and council deem that necessary throughout the next fiscal year. And that would be something that would, we would repay over time. You do know that one of our loans is expiring. And so, you know, the reality of being able to do that exists, but it would be what I would consider a last resort. Another possibility is rather than have our fire department operate the way it does, we could create a fire authority. What that does is have a a separate entity oversee that, and its authority consists of two governmental entities. And they enter into a contract to provide that service. And could work toward passing that authority and hopefully we could come in at a lower rate than we currently have. Possibility, if you want me to look deeper into that, I would. Another possibility is an expenditure that we could do away with. And that would be, you know that in the last year, we reduced our obligation for retiree healthcare and limited it only to the retiree. If, and we could, under the current decision by the Supreme Court, eliminate retiree healthcare entirely. That budget amount for next fiscal year would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's the number you'd be looking at saving if you were to move on that in the budget. So what I want to say to you is, we need a clear path for survival. You know, last week when Congress passed their latest relief bill, they didn't give any aid to states, they didn't give any to local governments. And so you're tasked with taking drastic action. And not that it makes you feel any better, but every other city, every other governmental unit across the region is looking at the same thing, and I would imagine our country, but I'm focused on our region right now. You heard the city of Detroit make some big cuts in the last week. And Wayne County is looking at having in place a spending freeze. So there's all kinds of things happening around us. And the city of Hamtramck needs to respond in kind and make sure that as we move on our budget next month, that all the best ideas are elevated and that they're talked about, considered, and thought through in a thoughtful way. I'm working on that budget, but I want you to know what we're up against. And I think showing you the revenue stream was the biggest thing that I could do tonight in order for you to have the first understanding of what's going to be needed here. Mayor, I'd open that up to any questions. And Susan Hendricks is on this as well, so feel free to ask questions of the both of us.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Do, Kathy, do you have that list, whatever you're reading off of, do you have that that you can email to us? I mean, that was a lot of information, you know, maybe we can, you know, instead of getting into some crazy discussion here, none of us are going to agree on everything. You know, maybe we can take a look at that list and offer our suggestions to you. You compile what, you know, what maybe be the same from everybody, or, you know, what what the options, you know, come from us. And go from there, rather than getting into this screaming match about what we think right now. You know, that was a lot to process for us for right now. So if you could.
I know, yeah, I'm happy to do that, and I was going to mention that, so thank you for reminding me, Councilwoman. Let me clean up my notes a little bit, because some of them are a little scribbly here. But for the most part, I have something like this, and this, and this. And I will share that tomorrow. In that way, you'll have a chance to look at something a little cleaner than what I'm working off of right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea, because this is a whole lot to digest. And there's a lot of moving, moving parts. And I think that we need some time to take a look at it closely, to, to, you know, just to process it and just to run through, you know, do our own computations and and run through this in our own heads. I think that any, you know, any discussion right now is premature. You know, you know, I welcome if, you know, folks have something to say, but in the end, I think that, you know, we're not going to come to any conclusions tonight, and we need some time to work through what we.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I agree with Kathy, Manager Kathy and Andrea, Councilwoman Andrea. Yeah, if you could send us an emails and we look at it precisely and we put our thoughts into this, you know, it would be much easier to navigate down and what to do for the city of Hamtramck.
I appreciate everybody's comments. You know, it is more difficult not being in the same room with you, but I have to say, I'm rather pleased with what we're doing here tonight. I'll get this to you by midday tomorrow, have everybody have a moment to digest it. I do want to draw your attention, I reached around and grabbed the budget calendar off of my wall behind my desk. So we'll be looking at having May council meetings that will address our budget. At our next council meeting, I'll be bringing a proposed budget to you. And that's when, and we do two budget meetings. The first one is, you know, the proposed, and then we hold the public hearing. And if we need to meet every week in order to hammer this out, because it is a little more difficult this year because of this revenue. And I think the information that we're going to get going forward is going to help shape what that revenue looks like. We don't have a lot of places to cut, we simply don't. So I'll send this, and then I will also send a modified budget calendar. It's not, it's going to be my suggestion, it's not anything you adopted. I'll send the one you adopted, along with a couple of modifications that I hope you'll consider. Additional work session or an additional meeting if needed. I just don't like that we're bumping up against that first week of June deadline. The deadline is, let me get it here, hang on one second.
Kathy, June second?
June second, I see it now.
Charter.
It said the second day of June, and so I was looking for a number and it was a word. But by charter, June second, we have to pass a budget. So that's a lot of work in May. It's a lot of work in May, but but we'll get there, I trust we'll get there with your cooperation. Other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Last year, this time, you already mentioned to the newspaper, I remember, warning to the council and mayor, prediction two million dollar will be short and they have to do some stuff. From two thousand nine, I've been here talking about the budget. We always, we given to the Michigan State to fix it. Everybody come, sell what we have, lot, other thing, personal things. So Bandit, 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 we putting there, putting there, putting there. You mentioned the fourteen employees, they promised us grand money. And they promised us that time two thousand thirteen, they will continue the grand money to keep these fourteen employees. So you are the manager. Your full-time job is to balance the budget, number one duty. So there is the previous or former couple of manager, even though Michigan State sent the manager, we have the, this situation, I want you to take it a couple of more days, not yesterday, tomorrow. Make a scenario number one, or proposal number one, proposal number two, proposal number three. Send us by Friday, and we all have to come, I believe, every week to fix it or give the idea. Gentlemen and young ladies, so we have to fix it. If we cannot balance the budget, the Michigan State will take over again. Guess what, from Mr. Shimmel to now, what I see, always we given to them, they don't fix, they Bandit and get out from there, they sold their door. Again and again, very clear, fourteen employees, grand money, right now you showing grand money is the zero. Your all those proposal, what you given earlier today, if you summarize, you added all those monies, it's not coming even one million, something. All those card, little, little card, what are you saying? There is the measure card, every, all the elected official, they know where is the measure card. They exactly knows, not the new one I'm talking. And I know it's the Mr. Jolak over there, he not gonna say nothing. He's the, me and him is the one approved the letter to Michigan State to come fix it. So again and again, it's nothing personal. Two, we have to keep our city name, city of Hamtramck. So keep the name city of Hamtramck, what we have to do together, with our money, without losing the revenue, expanding the lot of money, or not cutting nowhere. You know, we're not going nowhere, we're coming back and forth, back and forth, it not gonna happen. Emergency loan, we had it, what happened? After four years, came back to the same situation. So if we really love the city from the heart, we have to do something. A lot of city did it, combined the safety department, the Fraser City, that did it. And we go to Michigan Municipal League Conference of training, a lot of elected official talking, lot of things. So again and again, I'm requesting everybody, nothing personal, we have to take seriously and we have to fix it, and it is part of your job to push us. This is the scenario, you have to do it, if not, we cannot balance the budget. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, it's during Ramadan month, it's a fasting month, it's a, I just want to let you know, if you know, it's eight twenty past, eight twenty-six, break or fast. So I don't know, do we get a break to break fast, or we have?
Almost done. Done. Yeah, we're not, we're not going to take a break.
Okay, all right, I was just asking, I know. So, okay.
Let's take a water.
Madam Mayor, I don't have any other remarks about the budget, so unless there's other questions, I will distribute those, that document that I promised, and it won't be long, you'll have a proposed budget from me, but I am looking for input from each one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we'll move to reports to try to, try to get through before sundown, right?
We can move quickly.
My son is texting.
So Susan, our Chief Financial Officer, report.
So I think you already saw and heard from Kathy probably the most important things I would have said about this month's financial reports, you do have the reports that you always see from me. But in particular, in the revenues, we are watching those. We have already asked or already told department heads not to spend any money that doesn't need to be spent, hoping we can cut some expenditures. And I think our big question will be answered in May when we get some more information on the state share revenue. And those will all be coming back, council, as budget adjustments.
Thank you. Then Mayor's report, I have no report, I'm on every morning at eight thirty, that's my report, so. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much for that, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
I don't really have a report, I just, I do want to say that I want to express my condolences to the families of Isaac Robinson and Darla Swin. It's a very, it's tragic that we lost them, they were pillars of our community, and their passing proves that this is a real situation and that we need to take this seriously. And I encourage everybody to follow the state guidelines. As far as when you go out in public, please wear a mask, please continue to keep your social distance. And just know that we all have to take this seriously, and we'll get through it together, together apart, thank you.
Thanks. Any other? Councilwoman Amarasumi?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what Mayor Protem said, Mayor Protem and Proda said, as far as like social distancing and following what the CDC guidelines are and what the state's guidelines are, this is a very difficult time for everyone. And our condolences to those that have lost their lives, and our prayers go out to those are essential workers and they're doing everything they can, sacrificing their own safety for the sake of our needs. And anything that we can do in order to help, we're here to offer our assistance, we are community leaders and community servants. And, you know, just to those that are also working right now, that are also facing the month of Ramadan, you know, we hope that we continue strong. And to anyone out there that needs assistance, we're here at your service, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize all the city officials and city, city staffs as well as the community organizations that contributed so much time and so much of their devotion and everything to this COVID-nineteen. I really appreciate everyone coming out and showing up this crisis time and everyone who were helping. And we are here to help, you know, as, what as this coming weeks, I hope things get calm down and things are better, but we still need to keep our social distancing, wearing masks and keeping our family safe. And, you know, I'm here, folks, anytime you have any questions, anything. And I, as you know, I've been helping our communities with the pandemic. And I, as you know, I've been helping our communities with the pandemic unemployment assistance. And thank you so much, Kathy, for doing a lot of hard works from home and all the city officials. I see we have a Mr. Talat Der Giasch, Mr. Myers, Mr. Joluk, thank you so much. And Max Garberino, thank you so much for keeping our city of Hamtramck safe. And Mr. Clark, I guess, everybody, they're doing a wonderful job. I am very proud of, to be part of your family. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Any other council members?
Census, Hamtramck 45.3. So I'm requesting everybody, if we take everybody like a one or two family once a week. So it will be increased. Last, last time, 10 years ago, it was the 45. Now even though COVID-19, we got the 45 already. So we have a time and I'm requesting everybody, encourage the people to get up the percentage. Second thing, community, lots of people helping the communities. There is the Michigan Express, Nazal Huda, Monjurul Karim Tuhin, Armani Assad. They are every week distributing people masks and the food on content. Facebook, they update all the times, city manager also over there. And also from the BEPEC, some cash gift to the family who came, immigrant family who came from other countries. And there is nothing, they're not getting any food, stop, or not getting unemployment, not getting job, also helping some cash gift. So thanks BEPEC. And thank you also, Madam Mayor, you updating every day. That's the good thing. And people has to know what we have and how we can survive. So thanks everybody to attend the happy Ramadan.
Thanks. Any other, any other council member comments? Then the city managers report, I think we've heard it.
You're gonna hear a little more. You know, I have to say thank you to our staff. August, I'll start with you, couldn't do this without you. He has been in City Hall every day working. And this Zoom meeting, we're gonna give a round of applause to him right now. Because without August, this wouldn't have taken place.
Any second now, without my knowing.
We thank him. Joy Gargano, our treasurer, has been in every day and I want to thank her. I know, I have to trust she's watching somewhere from home with her cats and dogs. But she has been here depositing the funds and making sure that the treasurer's office, that revenue you saw, she's taking good care of it. Rodney Johnson, our Department of Public Service Director, has been monitoring that department and watching everything there. Alex, who has been on this call, has continued to work through. I think his social media skills are higher than the ones I have remember before. And does an excellent job making sure that not only the city of Hamtramck, but the DDA is made aware of everything going on. Let me make sure, Susan. Without Susan, we couldn't run the city. And I want to make sure that everybody watching knows that as well. We've been working on budgets tirelessly seven days a week. The two chiefs, Chief Hagan and Chief Moise, are doing their part. And our fire and police personnel are working every day in really difficult conditions. I'm gonna save someone for last because I have a couple of other announcements to make. But Max Garberino, I want to applaud the work he's been doing during this, above and beyond yeoman's work. I think everybody in the city who didn't know him before knows him now. But I'm gonna save, I want to have him make a few comments before we close. I share with all of you grief over Isaac Robinson. That probably was the biggest shock that I could even have imagined. Darla Swint, a pillar of our community. And you know, it goes without saying that we have a whole lot of other people that have died that live in our community. When this is all done, I want to join with all of you in a celebration of life for those that we knew, for those that we didn't, for those that survived and have a genuine reopening of our city. And take some time to remember those that, that were important to us and did a lot for our community. I have one other name I want to tell you that passed, that was a part of our community. Jack Williams, our former building official, passed away this week. I know many of you knew Jack. He came to a few council meetings. He worked for Safe Built. But our community knew Jack. And I gotta tell you, when I learned of that yesterday, it was very difficult to work because Jack and I were very close. I kept in close contact with him, as did a lot of the employees of the city of Hamtramck. There's a lot of people that were grieving right now over the loss of Jack. Jack suffered with cancer. And unfortunately, lost his battle yesterday. So when we do do that celebration of life, I'm gonna make sure Jack's included in that as well. Our city has a big heart. And I join with the mayor every morning and write the things that she speaks of as she's speaking. I'm every day astonished at who are the people that have stepped up and helped and did, gave of themselves. The John W. Smith old timers made a donation so that we could have COVID supplies in the city very, very early on. Mike Wilk is the president of that organization. Sharon Buttry, the Reverend Sharon, quickly put together with a group of friends, a Facebook page about COVID-19. We've had different people step up and buy meals. Our businesses, individuals have bought meals. Our city attorney bought a milk for police and fire. We've had Max Garberino in charge of finding others. So many people. Councilman Naim took food, meals from the Big Boy donation over to police and fire. Those are things we're not gonna forget. And believe you me, I'm keeping a list. So if you know things I don't, make sure you get them to me so that we can have a comprehensive list. Because our community has a big heart. Yes, I see you on this and I smile every time I see you because of all that you're doing. Councilman Hassan and Naz Huda and passing out masks and, you know, so many of our friends. I want to yield a little of my time to Max Garberino because he has been on the ground every day at businesses, working with these community groups, arranging the meals for police and fire, generally working on all of our supplies. Max, could you give us just a quick update?
Yeah, sure. So it's nice to see everyone, everyone looks healthy. And it's been a while. I have talked to a lot of you over the past month or so. Seen some of you in and out of the city. Pretty much been in the city seven days a week at this point. I'm pretty much every time there's a new order coming down, visiting every business and trying to bring them in line and in compliance. There's always questions inevitably every day. Fielding phone calls at home, at night, in the morning, weekends, in and out of all the grocers daily, in and out of most of the restaurants daily. Just today, the, actually with the help of August, the request of Kathy, we put together a new poster for the new PPE requirement for the face mask for all the businesses. So tried to hit as many of those as possible. Just got a lot going on, sourcing PPE supplies for the PD and fire, picking up and delivering, hand sanitizer, organizing the meals for the fire and police, which I would encourage. If anyone knows anyone that wants to donate, we're trying to do that as a constant morale boost to our public safety. We've been pretty successful with, actually, Councilman Naim, Kathy just mentioned donated at one point. But every Sunday, we're attempting to do that too. So I'm looking for volunteers for that. But just want to generally say if anyone has any businesses that come to them or anyone has any questions dealing with any of the orders or any of the compliance issues, I'm pretty much coordinating all of that. I've been meeting with businesses. Unfortunately, we had to keep a couple closed over the time. And I was, you know, delivering the bad news that sorry, you can't open. But I also was able to call some of them and tell them they're about to be able to be opening again too. So it's been a long road trying to get everybody on board. A lot of people were stubborn, but at this point, I'm happy to report that the vast majority of our businesses are doing their best to comply with all their staff wearing masks, doing the social distancing properly. Of course, we're still, we still have issues because there are, you know, there are stubborn people out there. But we've come leaps and bounds over the, over the past weeks so far and we will continue to do more. I expect a lot more calls and feedback for the rest of this week because of the new mask requirement provided by the governor. Please just direct any of them to me if you have them. I'm more than happy to talk to anyone. My phone is on seven days a week and I can field calls pretty much for any residents. In addition to that, as Kathy mentioned, Reverend Buttry and a group of block club members coordinated the COVID-19 Hamtramck response, which is basically our residents stepping up to the plate, trying to do things. They've been organizing grocery pickups for our residents and other things. And also making suggestions to us of things that they think we should also do as well, which has been very helpful and appreciative. They're actually coordinating right now, I'm coordinating with them right now to try to get to a flyer together for our restaurants, how to deal with Corona moving forward as, as some of them eventually will be able to open or not open. But some of the safety precautions they'll be able to need or be able to use moving forward. So it's, it's been a constant, constant busyness. I actually feel like I'm busier now than I was prior. Maybe it's because I'm in the city on the weekends as well now. But I stand ready to help. And if anyone needs anything or has any questions, my phone's always on. And that's pretty much all I got for now.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Max. And I, I know what you're saying is true because I'm getting in touch with you all the time, asking you to look into stuff.
Yeah, he's been excellent. I will tell you, we've had some activity at the park. And Max has taped off every park in the city and the school asked us to do Pulaski Park as well and we did that. So there's caution tape and we've had to rouse people out of there. And I want to thank our police officers for doing the same at different times of day. As this weather breaks, people are starting to congregate. So anything you can do, council members, to encourage those that you know and have influence over to please continue to keep that distance and, you know, walk through our city parks, but don't congregate.
Okay. Then with that, I'll open the floor to public comment.
All right, let me figure out how to do this here.
All right.
Timer ready. Okay, Bill, you interested? Okay, whenever you're ready.
All right, fine. Thank you. Thank you for having this meeting. I'm gonna make a brief for Muslim council persons who want to get home and, or they're home. Wait, you're home already. Why just, you can eat and drink at home. Okay, that's good. I just want to say, why wasn't this document that Kathy brought out about the budget presented to the council before the meeting? Or I mean, this is not new stuff. I mean, this, we've been dealing with, like Hassan has said, we've been dealing with this for years. And I think we shouldn't have all looked so shocked when we saw the numbers. I don't understand why we're shocked about this. We knew already there was at least a $2 million deficit. So this is causing more of a problem with COVID. But I just think we need some creative ideas on how to increase the revenue other than cutting people's salaries and cutting out, you know, spending. That's one thing. But we've talked about this for years. And I know I've come to council meetings many times, suggested things. And I'm sure that we got creative people on the council that can come up with some ideas. Obviously, we need more people living in the city. We need to attract more people to the city so that we can get more income, more taxes, more people buying things in our city. But I was originally gonna talk about the first thing on the agenda about the tap, the tap bar. And I wondered, of all the things that were on the budget, on the agenda, I mean, that's the only business that we're talking about adding. And it happens to be a bar. I mean, in a city where bars have been going down in numbers, now we're gonna have another bar, a tap bar. And according to the master plan, we're supposed to have, there's a communit, there's a commercial gap because we don't have a tap bar or whatever. I mean, this is all beyond me. I was, I was part of that whole master plan process. I went to every meeting of the master plan and I saw who came to it and I saw who was coming up with the ideas. And I know it wasn't a cross-section of the people in the city. So I'm very disappointed in that, that we haven't come up with more creative ideas. Kathy seems to be coming up with, with a lot of good ideas. And I hope the council steps forward. I mean, that's what you were elected for, come up with ideas on how to get us out of this financial mess. But I don't want to sound too negative at a time when we all need as much positive vibes as we can get. So let's worry about this next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, do you want to speak?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can all hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna reserve a lot of my comments for emails and Messenger. But I, I'm, will continue to be internally optimistic about the city of Hamtramck. And I will really emphasize, I know you've been talking about a lot of cuts and changes. I would express the fact that, you know, the city has a very good cushion right now with their fund balances. You've got a really good year of time to make some serious adjustments and promotions. And again, you know, I've been promoting our Hamtramck businesses and diversity of our businesses. And we sure do have a lot. We have a lot to offer outside of Hamtramck. I think one of the key components right now, emphasis, is business retention. And it's not just the DDAs, but it's now thankfully, we've got a great guy there, Alex, in the Economic Development Department, to concentrate on our business retention. So if we can do that and encourage the businesses to promote and do some more collective advertising amongst themselves, we can, we can generate some new revenues in Hamtramck. Especially if we can show the people outside of Hamtramck, Hamtramck is the place to shop. Hamtramck is the place to invest. Hamtramck is the place to open up a new business, especially these times. So again, I will reserve a lot of my other comments to emails and we'll leave it at that. Other than that, this is a great session and we have to do this for another month or two. It's a little tricky, but I got into it finally. So it's not an easy, easy trick. Anyway, thank you, August, for your information on how to get on. Thank you.
Excuse me, August. Real quickly, August, May 12th is gonna be the next time we host another one of these, correct? I think technically that would be the next day, unless we have a budget meeting ahead of that, which we'll announce and let you know. All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, if there's anyone else that, oh, sorry, Bob, are you done?
I'm done. Yeah.
If there's anyone else that wants, it's not, I can't see you. If you want to hit the raise hand button, I will unmute you. Because there's a few folks on here that I don't know. I don't know if you're here to speak or not. Flotter, you want to speak or not? You are? Okay. There's a raise hand button there too. All right. You're all set, sir. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And Ramadan Mubarak to everybody in this room. And I'm very sad to hear about Jack Williams, which Kathy anger know that I had a very close contact with him all the time during my project. So sorry for the loss of Jack Williams, former contractor. And everybody else is doing great job in this COVID-19. Hamtramck is really great that I'm very happy to be a part of Hamtramck. And wish everybody good luck on their lockdowns. So after the lockdown, hope we can come back to pre-Corona situation where we left. So hope we can come back to the situation where we actually left before the lockdown. Thank you, everyone. And I don't want to longer this meeting anymore. Take care.
I just want to thank you for all the work that you've been doing, the volunteer work you've been doing as well since we've got you here.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for updating everything every morning. You know, it takes a lot, but you're doing it on time. I'll listen to the video, I'll listen to the recordings. All right, guys. Thank you.
I like starting my day with the mayor. I hope when this is all over, she doesn't give up her career as a, you know, a home, home Facebook Live person. I've already talked to her about that.
Yeah, she already have a lot of fans.
I think somebody else ought to do it once this is over.
And then, just want to quick, thank you, Mayor Madam Maskey for coming out on Saturday. April 18, the BADC, Voluntary American Democratic Caucus was distributing food organized by BADC and was sponsored by Big Boys. Thank you so much. And thank you all for coming live.
Okay, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? I don't see anyone else that's coming back on. Madam Mayor, it's your call.
All right. So do we have a motion adjourned? All right. So do we have a motion adjourned?
Yes.
I got motion.
Support.
Any objection? Then we are, we are adjourned. I think this all works pretty well. Looking forward to the next time.
Yeah, not bad for the first try, everyone.
Pretty cool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
Sorry, I couldn't share the food. Here's a delicious food, but you're welcome next time. Let's just serve him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.